Turn around this way. Turn around, sorry, this is your, you look like you want to be the holder. Yep, everybody. You are here, turn around this way, are you ready?
I pledge with the Legion to the nine stands of the nine states of America and to the in public for which it stands, one nation under God and invisible of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you guys so much, good job. Okay, so that brings us into discussion, possible action on matters emanating from executive session. Could I have a motion to approve the stipulated agreement number one regarding student conduct as presented in executive session?
So moved.
With a motion by Ms. Grant, do we have a second? And a second by Ms. O'Donnell, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And any abstentions? Seeing none, that motion passes. Could I have a motion to approve the stipulated agreement number two regarding student conduct as presented in executive session? With a motion by Mr. Solozzi, do we have a second? And a second by Mr. Scully? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And any abstentions? That motion passes. Could I then have a motion to approve the stipulated agreement number three regarding student conduct as presented in executive session? With a motion by Ms. Gallo, do we have a second?
Excellent.
And a second by Ms. Mikowski, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And any abstentions? That motion passes. Could I then have a motion to approve the stipulated agreement number four regarding student conduct as presented in executive session?
Make the motion.
With a motion by Ms. O'Donnell, do we have a second? And a second by Mr. Scully, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And any abstentions? That motion passes. That then brings us to public comment. If there is anyone from the public that would like to make public comment, please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Is that better? Good evening, my name is Kimberly Halluzi. I'm the vice chair for the Nagatuck DEI Subcommittee. I live at 15 Salentano Drive here in Nagatuck. I wanted to come here today and thank City Hill Model School, Mrs. Mezzo, the Black Student Union Committee, Black Student Union, and everyone involved in the amazing cultural heritage event that took place at City Hill last month. It was such a pleasure to be able to attend with my family and see families from all over the community come together and learn about and experience the different cultures of our community. We thoroughly enjoyed this event, and we hope that this will be a staple in our community each and every year. Also, I came here tonight because I have some exciting news. Our very own town of Nagatuck and the Nagatuck DEI Committee is hosting a statewide event on March 25th. This will be a series of talks with multiple organizations from all over Connecticut coming together to talk about DEI-ing engaged with the community. It is my honor today to extend an invitation to our educational partners here at the district office, as well as our distinguished board. As the hosting town, it would be a wonderful thing to see our, an array of our public and school officials there to support this important work that we do, as well as the entire community. We hope we can count on seeing you there. I brought some flyers for each of you, and if you have any questions or would like any further information, please reach out to myself or anyone from the DEI Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are any other members of the public that would like to provide public comment, please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record. And I'll do one last call for public comment. Seeing none, we will move into the superintendent's report, and I will turn it over to Superintendent Montini.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And as you likely know, I don't think you could not know, based on the cards in front of you, the posters and sentiments behind you, that March is Board of Education Appreciation Month. And I certainly am thankful for and appreciative of you as a board, I've said this, but my words, they're my words. Let's, let's hear from those, the reason we exist here as a board, and for many of us as, as people and fathers and parents, let's hear from our students.
Did you know that March is Board of Education Appreciation Month in Connecticut? Our Board of Education is a group of volunteers who are dedicated to giving us the tools and resources we need to thrive. They set our budget and decide what...
Did you know that March is Board of Education Appreciation Month in Connecticut? Our Board of Education is a group of volunteers who are dedicated to giving us the tools and resources we need to thrive. They set our budget and decide what programs we will have.
Our Board of Ed has nine members who are elected this year, two-year terms.
They make personal sacrifices and spend countless hours making sure schools run smoothly.
We wanted to say thank you to the Nagatuck Board of Education.
In honor of Board of Education Appreciation Month, I'd like to thank you for your dedication to Nogto Public Schools. On behalf of the administrative team, I'd like to thank you for helping us to create welcoming schools where students and staff are happy and curious learners.
Thank you for saying good policies for us to follow.
Thank you for the opportunities you provide us to succeed.
Thank you.
Thank you for caring for us.
Thank you for hiring the best staff to teach us.
Thank you for making sure we had the money to learn and grow.
Thank you, Nagatuck Learning Nation.
Thank you for coming to our class and reading to us.
Thank you for doing everything for all the schools.
Thank you for caring about us.
Thank you for making our school the best.
Thank you!
The state summative assessments. The, we are now entering testing season, and we are about to embark upon the Smarter Balance Assessment, the SATs, et cetera. So the memo essentially lets you know that mid-March, the window opens and we'll be doing it throughout the spring. And last, in the superintendent's report, I am going to turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Cooney.
I think I'm actually going to use this other mic. So we have lots of amazing educators here this evening, and they are here in, very appropriately, in the Board of Education Appreciation Month to share their appreciation with you for supporting the TRP program. And if you had not had a chance to see, WTNH did a beautiful piece, I'm going to play that for you now, because that will describe in a very personal way the TRP program and what it looks like for us here in Nagatuck. And why don't we have our principals and our staff join us, and it's very appropriate that their families are here who share their, the residence in their evenings and during the day when they're at work and at evenings in school, but you could come up and stand with us while we play the video, that would be wonderful, and then I'll introduce you thereafter. To the podium, did I say that? Sorry about that. Oh no, I don't want to do it that way.
Okay, Wes, thank you. Getting more teachers in the classroom who look like the students they're educating. This morning, we're heading to Nagatuck, one of several districts, participating in a statewide program in What's Right with Schools.
Great job!
To these third graders at Hupbrook Elementary School in Nagatuck, Arvela Salvario is already a teacher and mentor.
How do you want to prove that this is real?
In reality, she's still learning herself. She's a resident working beside teacher Lisa Taft.
Having the experience to be in the class, since the first day, is really a nice experience, and having a mentor like Lisa has been an awesome place of work.
She's one of about 44 others in the teacher residency program right now, a statewide effort to get more teachers in the classroom, particularly those of color.
I'm Hispanic, so they also relate to me.
Right now, we have only 10% of our teachers that identify as teachers of color, and over 50% of our students identify as people of color.
Program Director Marlene Mago says this is an alternate route to teacher certification that focuses on diversifying teachers. The residents take classes themselves while hands-on learning in a classroom and earning a paycheck.
Can somebody explain to Jose what is identity property? Evan?
This is a gradual release program. At the start of the school year, the resident is more shadowing their mentor, whereas at this point in the school year, they've really started to take over the teaching.
It's great to hear when they come back to class, you know, the next evening and say, "Oh, I was able to try that with a student," and they loved it. So it's that, that instant almost gratification of being able to learn something new in the class that you're taking and then be able to go out and work with those students.
Learning to teach and giving students in the classroom a mentor to look up to.
I enjoy seeing how they learn, how they project differently, trying when they get something.
It's What's Right with Schools. So there are 44 people in it now, about 65 have already gone through, and of those, we're told that 100% of those are in teaching positions today, so it's really making a difference in the shortage and diversity of classrooms.
And it seems like it's kind of a fast-track approach to getting more teachers in those classrooms.
It is, because it gives them the experience in the classroom, so they're seeing it and then staying in those jobs, rather than coming out of school and realizing it's not for them, so it's really making an impact.
Great story.
Yeah.
So we're very proud that all of the hard work was featured on that amazing feature. And standing right up front, she was our first resident that finished the program and is now teaching third grade at Hupbrook School. It's important that the principals are here, they all, they provide a lot of support to both the mentors and the teachers, and they attend regular seminar meetings. And our mentors do the same. The residents go through a very rigorous application process to get to this point, and once they do, the coursework is also distributed again, and we're very, very proud of all of the hard work. So I believe our two mentors, Ruby Burns and the staff are very supportive of this, and they're the leaders here.
I got this. All right, well, thank you Board of Ed for allowing us to be a part of this wonderful program. This is my first year doing it, and I've learned so much from Lisa. We're really appreciative because we have some amazing residents, and I'm really proud of you, Dineshka, for finishing the program and being hired.
The teacher residency program allows us to collaborate with educators, administrators, and coaches across the state of Connecticut who are passionate and dedicated to making a difference in our schools. We understand the importance of diversifying teaching staff, creating an inclusive environment, and giving all children the opportunity to see and make connections with teachers who share the same background, culture, and skin color. So again, thank you for creating this opportunity and supporting all of us, and I just have to say that, you know, this being my second year as a mentor, my residence and my experience have been amazing, and I feel fully supported by Nagatuck Public Schools as well as the teacher residency program, so thank you.
Great, thank you all so much, and while tonight seems to be a lot of our appreciation, right, I also appreciate our board, and each member of you, and thank you for all that you do, but we really do appreciate them. We appreciate them more than anything. Their laughter, their, the going into the class and being able to read, seeing them smile, it makes what we do all worthwhile. So we appreciate you, and thank you for showing us what's important. Thank you. Then we'll move on to our student rep report, which we also appreciate our student reps, because they help to bring a student perspective to our board, and we thank them for all the work they do.
Thank you. I could think I can speak on behalf of Ruby and myself, but I say that spending every month with you guys, every meeting, policy and curriculum committee meetings, has been such an amazing, amazing experience. This has been one of the best, like, learning opportunities I've had in my time at Nogto Public Schools, and I think I can speak for Ruby when we say that. We really appreciate you guys, everything you've done for us as board members, as well as colleagues on the board, so thank you for that. Now into our reports. On February 28th, the Black Student Union held our first, the first annual NHS Black History Month Assembly. The presentation included performances from the NHS dance team, step team, and jazz band, as well as poetry and essay readings, and we just wanted to say incredible job to everyone involved with the planning and presentation of the summit.
Also, on March 22nd, freshmen, sophomores, and juniors at Nogto High School will be taking the PSAT and SAT tests, and seniors will have the opportunity to continue post-secondary planning. Scores will be available on the angle, and good luck to them. And as some of you may know, the indoor track team is sending quite a few team members to Nationals this weekend. The team had some really great victories at the Connecticut State, State Open, and New England meets, and I actually have the names of the students who will be competing in Nationals this weekend, so I just wanted to give them some recognition, because this is a really amazing accomplishment for them. So Brendan Lyle, Shane Hasipy, Zach McCaslin, and Daniel Anderson will be competing in the 4x400. Brendan Lyle, Shane Hasipy, Zach McCaslin, and Jason Costa will be competing in the 4x800. Jayden Bartow will be competing in the high jump, and Lily Jason, Lauren Zonski, Lauren Crobo, and Devine Kabango will all be competing in the 4x400 and the 4x200. So we just wanted to extend our congratulations and good luck to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, good luck to them, to all of our sports teams as the spring season starts up soon, right?
Yeah.
Okay, that brings us to our enrollment report. Any questions on the enrollment report? Seeing none, we'll go into the fire drill report. Any questions on the fire drill report? Seeing none, we'll go into the human resource report. Any questions on the human resource report? Seeing none, we'll go to the facility use report. Any questions on the facility use report? Seeing none, we'll go into the finance report. Any questions on the finance report? Seeing none, we will skip over the field trip requests that's my understanding, but that is going to be drawn. Go into old business. So this was a first read from last month. So could I have a motion to approve BOE policy 4600 reports of suspected abuse or neglect of children, and 4600 R administrative regulations?
So moved.
With a motion by Ms. Grant, do we have a second?
Second.
And a second by Ms. Mikowski, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And any abstentions? That motion passes. And also, this was the first read last month, could I have a motion to approve BOE policy 5113, student attendance, truancy, and chronic absenteeism, and 5113R administrative regulations?
So moved.
With a motion by Ms. Gallo, do we have a second?
Second.
And a second by Ms. O'Donnell, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And any abstentions? That motion passes. That brings us to our new business, our first item is the 2023-2024 budget. And I will ask Superintendent Montini to give a brief overview.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So as with everything within this organization, we begin with the end in mind, who we serve, what we're trying to accomplish, and we start our budget presentation with the vision of the graduate. The dispositions, the skills, the knowledge, who we want to leave us when we graduate, that certainly informs and helps us understand, plan for, in regards to where we're going to spend our money, and how we're going to continue to cultivate in each and every one of our students the attributes of the vision of the graduate, so they leave us well-prepared for whatever they so choose. We develop, in order to do that, as you know, we develop a strategic plan, inclusive of priorities centered around academic excellence, positive culture and climate, robust systems that support students on all levels, and talent development, making sure that there's a high-quality teacher in front of each and every student. We have much to appreciate tonight, the theme of the night. We've had such wonderful moments, really magic, like the magic that a lot of you recently had when you read in all the classrooms throughout our district, the joy that comes with those. So some of these pictures you've seen in my, perhaps in my newsletter, where our kindergartners begin the very beginning of the school year, establish a goal, setting priorities for themselves with their hopes and dreams. We have Eugene, who I don't know that he realized that his essay was going to receive the accolades that he did, but he's, he's certainly taking the show on the road with the senator there. We have our band that's going to play at the White House, because they won states, New England, and they're, they're being recognized, Kim and Third nationally. We have the aforementioned, some of those folks competing in Nationals with our track team. We have a graduation rate that is continuing to rise. We have more students taking challenging and advanced coursework. We're working on the right-hand side to ensure that all students leave us with a plan, and we're not at 100% yet, and we won't rest till we get to 100%. We have two schools of distinction, honored for growth, top 10% growth in Connecticut. We celebrated that before, we'll celebrate them until we can't celebrate anymore, because it's a wonderful achievement to have two schools of distinction in Andrew and Hupbrook. We have an engaged board, an engaged community, whether it's our veterans council, our board conducting the, conducting the science workshop, Ms. Gallo and the two students blowing the curve because they're getting every single thing right in the lab. Mr. Solozzi and myself, I conveniently cut myself out of the picture, just trying to keep up. And we have Bob Mayer reading to students, we have the library, all students at Salem in the lower right receiving a library card with the children's librarian, and then we have too many folks to mention in the lower left, the annual affair where so many business folks from downtown come together to do mock interviews for our, for our students, to prepare them again for what comes next. We are the vision of the graduate. As we transition now into enrollment and numbers, know that all of the decisions that we make are for the betterment and to serve our students and their families. So our enrollment this year is 4,000, and this is October. You know that we go October to October when we talk enrollment, but we, in between, are always monitoring those numbers to see if there's any shifts, if we need to reallocate resources differently because of a change in enrollment. Yeah, yeah, and I go to each one. So we have students eligible for free reduced lunch continues to increase, and again, you know that that means directly certified here in Nogto, because we're CEP, that's 58%. On the right, our graduation rate continues to increase, you'll see over that 10-year period. Our significant in regards to impacting our program and funding has been the increase in our English language learners, our multilingual learners, students often whose dominant language is other than English. You'll notice in this time period that it's doubled from 251, projected conservatively to be 500 next year from now, if you don't mind going to the next. So some of those changes between October and October were basically flat down for students, but if you looked on February 16th, when I pulled the data, we're up 50 students as compared to last year. Forty-seven students more with IEPs, an increase of 6.2% in the year. Eighty-nine more multilingual learners, which is an increase of 25% in one year, and it doubled from 2018 to 2023. Fun fact, I don't know if you know this, but we speak 40, our families and our students, they speak 42 different languages. The most common three are English at 80%, Spanish at 8%, and Portuguese at 7%. There's a whole bunch of other languages that are, you know, half a percent, et cetera. Next would be Arabic, then French, then Polish, if you're interested, but those are in the 1% and sub-1%. We entered this budget season during a really fiscally challenging time. There are economic factors and challenges in this budget cycle. Inflation from the December 21st to 22 was 8.1% high. Social Security COLA during 2023 was high. Minimum wage will increase again in June of '23. We are transitioning to a loss of federal COVID money and AR. There are personnel and staffing shortages, and increased transency related to staff. Just recently, I was reading an article that, that said that in the last three, I don't know the number of years in this time period, in recent history, the Connecticut schools' educator prep programs were down 43%. Yeah, yeah. So data to back up what we've been talking about, not a lot of folks are going into the field. And then increased costs with utilities, supplies, transportation, tuition, and health insurance. So those led us to create a plan that will cultivate our students to the vision of the graduate and provide the resources at $67,485,698. That's an increase of 4.59% or roughly 2.5, just under 3 million. How did we get there? Well, namely, the series that you see, a little bit in salaries, although not much, we, we... Well, namely, the series that you see, a little bit in salaries, although not much, we engaged in some mitigation strategies there. Benefits, the cost of health insurance, purchase services, we'll talk about the drivers there being on a district tuition and transportation, increased costs with supplies, and capital being flat. So I'll take a moment on the next slide to talk about the drivers. So salaries, if we rolled all of the salaries over, gave everybody the contractual increase that they were due based on a negotiated contract, there would be roughly an increase of eight-hundred-fifty-nine-thousand. We have other salary savings, as you know, at a recent workshop, we reduced the net eleven FTEs, they have anticipated increase in salary savings, and some increased revenue, which negated the majority of that. That gets to that nineteen thousand increase because we, we were able to reduce that by eight-hundred-and-forty thousand. Our one particular driver and the three drivers, as you can see, are highlighted in gray. Healthcare, we're in the second year renewal of our health insurance, which maxes out at a six point nine percent increase, which is eight-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand for our budget. Hopefully, as the spring, as we get into the spring and we get an actual renewal rate, we're hoping that we will receive a better renewal rate, and that will be able to come down a little bit. Right now, we're planning for the max that it could be at six point nine percent. I'm going to skip down, there's some other smaller drivers, I'm going to skip to transportation. Transportation, as you can see, is roughly five hundred thousand dollar increase. We had extended our contract with our quote-unquote our regular or our go-to-door service, the buses, STA. That contract increases by one point five percent, but there is a significant transportation shortage throughout the state. We were lucky, we endured very well in the pandemic. Lots of both were canceling sports. Eastern Connecticut had the National Guard get involved, and they were running multiple shifts in their schools, much like you do when you have significant overcrowding or renovation to, just to operate. The out-of-district costs for out-of-district transportation is increasing seventy-one percent, which nets out at a thirteen percent increase for transportation in total. And I'll skip to another driver, which is tuition. We have not increased the out-of-district tuition in several years, as you know, and costs have incrementally been going up, so much so that we are forecasting this year to cost us one point two million dollars more than anticipated, which is why this driver is based on actuals. All of these things together, that's how we get to the two point nine million dollar increase. Not asking for new or innovative or things that are flashy, really, this budget is the result of the need for increased operational costs. So we have, as you know, continuous improvement in all that we do is the essence of who we are. We collectively work to understand our current context, where we are and where we need to go. We identify targeted enhancements as they relate to our needs, we create the strategic plan, and we're always acting with fiscal prudence. Where can we reallocate versus adding? Is more what we need, or do we need to do something different? And that's what we did together when we talked about in our workshop, where we reallocated some positions and we made some strategic decisions just, just last week. So we have the six targeted enhancements, six priorities as they relate to our strategic plan and the budget, the majority of which are contin, are continuation strategies. So we're going to continue, as you know, the aforementioned increase in multilingual learners, we'll continue to provide the expanded services for English learners, not adding any staff in this particular budget, or maintaining our newly, or maintaining and implementing our newly developed programming. We are expanding special services program. This budget calls for an increase of point five, special education teacher, and point five speech and language pathologists, based on, again, that six point two percent increase at plus forty-seven, based on caseloads, enrollment, and need. We're going to continue to create, nurture, cultivate safe, welcoming, and responsive school climate everywhere. In order to do that, we'll continue with responsive classroom and trauma-informed practices. We'll maintain the new schedule at City Hill and the additional safety and security staff at City Hill and NHS that were approved previous and previous budgets. Nothing new there. Early literacy improvement. We will continue to implement our improved phonics curriculum. And as you know, the K-three reading program that I communicated to the full board earlier and curriculum committee more recently, we will, in line with the legislative mandate, continue to analyze, evaluate, and potentially select a K-three reading program for twenty-twenty-four. Again, not budgeted here. We'll continue with the district-wide math enhancements. We have two more grades that will roll out the new program that we've been doing the last several years. That's grade one and grade four, funded by Alliance. And the picture that you just saw of the board trying out the, embedding the new science program, we will implement a new science program open sciatic grades six through eight, funded by Alliance. And that is how we get to, and how we're proposing from a targeted enhancement, moving forward, strategic planning, to spend the sixty-seven million, four hundred eighty-five thousand, six hundred ninety-eight dollars.
Thank you Superintendent Montini for that overview. As you know, the budget process starts a few months ago, started with the curriculum committee, or the finance committee, where we took a dive into the budget, and then went into our board workshops, and then where we laid some cuts to the superintendent's recommended budget, which then, after our vote tonight, becomes the Board of Education budget that we present to the borough. So can I have a motion?
Excuse me. I've been assured by the highest levels of state government, governor, speaker, others, that at a minimum, your ECS, our ECS is going to go up one point seven and could go up as much as four million or higher. I think the bite is above four million. So if that happens, you're going to get more than two point nine. But I think the worst-case scenario is pretty good because there's definitely going to be more money coming to the borough into, into most towns. And what they're doing is they're taking the number that we were allocated to get in twenty-twenty-eight and giving it to us now. And if that happens, and it's at least fifty, fifty or better, we're going to get four million, which means that you'll get one million more than you're asking for. I can't guarantee that that's going to happen. I do not always have a lot of confidence in the state, but they're talking about things that are, are very exciting for education, and at least in my office, that's what we're pushing for and working on. So hopefully, that's what happens.
Thank you for that update. So could I have a motion to accept the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four budget in the amount of sixty-seven million, four hundred eighty-five thousand, six hundred ninety-eight dollars as a borough, as the board's twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four budget request to the borough of Nautica?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Ms. O'Donnell, do we have a second?
I do.
And a second by Ms. Gall, any discussion?
Listen, I'll never abstain until the final vote.
It's in here, Monday, March twenty-seventh, six thirty, right here, likely.
That's a communication later.
It's in the presentation, too. It's the last slide.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And any abstentions?
I abstain.
No. That motion passes. Okay, that brings us on to a donation. Could I have a motion to accept the donation from the Ion Bank Foundation in the amount of one thousand dollars to the Black Student Union to help cover field trip costs?
I'll make that motion.
Your motion by Ms. McCauskey, do we have a second?
Second.
And a second by Mr. Solozzi, any discussion?
Appreciate it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion passes. And yes, as everyone said, thank you to Ion Bank for helping our Black Student Union be ready this year. That brings us to a number of policies that we have as first reads. There is a memo in there. So over the course of the next month, if you review the policies, look at the updates, I'll just go over what they are. You have policy forty-one seventeen, emergency action plan for intracurricular and intramural athletic events. Policy forty-one eighteen, exertional heat illness awareness for intramural and intracurricular Policy fifty-five seventy, section five hundred four rehabilitation act and administrative regulations. BOE policy sixty-seven ten, high school graduation requirements. Sixty-seven twenty, weighted grading and calculation of grade point average. Sixty-seven forty, policy addressing enrollment in advanced course or program challenging the curriculum and administrative regulations. And BOE policy sixty-seven forty-five, credit for online courses and remote learning. Again, these are all first reads, so if you have any questions, comments, concerns, we'll go over them. Any questions in the meantime? See none? We'll move into approval of the minutes. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes from the February ninth, twenty-twenty-three BOE meeting?
I'd like your motion.
Your motion by Mr. Solozzi, do we have a second?
A second.
And a second by Ms. O'Donnell, any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion passes. That brings us to communications, and as you'll see, the board will present the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four budget request to the borough on Monday, March seventh, March twenty-seventh, at six thirty at the board of education. So here it is. And our next communication, you'll see in your back end, a letter from United Veterans Council inviting the Board of Education to march on a more daybreak. We did that last year, which was a good time, so I hope that everyone can meet you. And last, we have a welcome to kindergarten video.
We just figured we're going to saturate you today.
Yes, we did kindergarten registration.
Right. We figured who best to tell our incoming case, our current case.
I really like kindergarten because I make new friends, and it's the best grade. I felt kind of nervous, but once I started doing kindergarten more, I started to really, really like it. My teacher makes me feel happy because she's always being super nice to me and my friends. She knows me really well because she sent to all of the kids who were going to be in her class a get to know your teacher card. She makes me feel super happy when I walk in the door in the morning. Then she lets you have lots of fun. You might be wondering what kindergarten is all about. We teach study, reading, math, social, and, 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 and. We go to class, learning music, TV, computer, each week. Sometimes it's a little confusing, but it's okay. I tell everyone I love choices. I'm a lot different than you. Because I'm a little bit later. I order you to play. And I like the computers. It's a great time, athletes. When I go back to school, I'm more scurrying. I love kindergarten. My teacher makes me feel really, really, really. Sometimes he doesn't let me do something that I really love. I think he really cares about you. Everyone's very curious. I really want to know what I did, what's my achievement. Why do you come along with me? So in the morning, I get off the bus, and I want to teach you because you have to go. Then I get breakfast, and they would say, "Don't I never want to do anything?" You tell me, "Oh, yeah." And that would be, like, massively. I answer, "Yes, I'll do it." Because I didn't come to work. I'm lying there listening to my teacher. There are reasons, and you're reading, and you're looking. That's why I'm here. Make sure that you know your phone number, you know your address, and you know your name. Make sure you listen to your brother and your sister. Make sure you're in a good mood. Make sure you're welcome. Make sure you're safe this year. Have a great night's sleep. Make sure you see the clock at eight fifty-five. Have good food, eat breakfast at school, they serve it at school. Wear appropriate clothes for school and for the weather. Make sure you have a bath, because it's going to turn cold at work. You don't need to bring many friends' papers or printables because they have last. Make your head good, darling. As I said, you're going to go to school. All that. I will give you all the love. Good night. Have fun. You're going to be well. Good night. Goodbye. Goodnight. 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 Goodbye. Goodnight.